We left off with Bill Number 419-31COR. It's the motion from Vice Speaker Cruz. When we broke for lunch, we had Senator Respejio who was speaking last. And Senator Respejio, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Vice Speaker keeps kicking me. I don't know if that means that I should just stop what I'm trying to do and sit down, or he's losing his balance on his chair. But before we broke for lunch, I offered an amendment that would insert the words "in all classes of government service" on line 18 for the specific reason that we don't ever want an employee who is confirmed by the legislature to use his official authority or influence for the purpose of interfering with or affecting the results of the election. I'm very pleased that we're guided by the Civil Service Commission and former Senator Tony Lamorena has confirmed that the directors will not be able to use their influence anyway because they're covered under the -- that kind of politicking during working hours or in a government property would not be allowed. So the Hatch Act covers that kind of activity. So my first request is to withdraw my motion that would have inserted those words.
So we're on page three, Senator Respejio?
Correct.
Line 18. And after the word "an employee," you're going to insert the new words "in all class..."
No, but I'm going to withdraw it.
You're going to withdraw it?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to withdraw. Are there any objections? No objection. Motion carries. Senator Respejio, you still have the floor.
And in keeping with the theme of what I'm trying to present to this body, Madam Speaker, there's another area in page three, beginning with line 23, that talks about specific activity in which employees are prohibited from participating. And then it includes a whole list of things. It includes soliciting, collecting, handling, dispersing, or accounting for assessments, contributions, or other funds for a political party, partisan political organization, or candidate. It includes organizing, selling tickets to, seeking support for, or actively participating in a fundraising activity of a political party, partisan political organization, or candidate, taking an active part in managing the political campaign of a candidate, being a candidate. And I believe there's other items on the second page. And for purposes of -- for those that are following along on TV, discharging, promoting, demoting, or changing the compensation of any employee or promising to threaten to do so because said other employee advocates or fails to advocate through contribution, voting, or otherwise, a candidate. And then lastly, using government travel allowances, government transportation, government supplies, or government facilities for the benefit of any political party, partisan political organization, or candidate. And the issue I raised before this body, Madam Speaker, is that, again, these provisions are only applied to classified employees and not applied to those who are appointed by the governor, confirmed by this legislature, and specifically those who are hired directly under the governor's hiring authority. And while I understand that the two distinctions of unclassified and classified, in the classified service, you have the opportunity or the ability to avail yourself to the merit protection, whereas the unclassified employee serves at the pleasure of their appointing authority and can be released at any time. But of all these prohibitions, the one thing that I'm very concerned about is the prohibition against a classified employee being able to be a candidate for public office, but you are allowing -- or this current law, Madam Speaker, allows appointed officials and special assistants to the governor to be able to be a candidate without having to resign. Now, I understand that there's a bill before this body that would allow candidates to be -- classified employees to be candidates. And I've already, early on, said that I would not -- could not support something like that for the very reason that the merit protection protects those classified employees. If they were to be a candidate for public office, Madam Speaker, then they would be going against the very system that's there to protect them. And so, keeping with that argument, I just don't know why, then, we allow appointed officials who are confirmed by the legislature to be a candidate for public office and allow them to keep their jobs. When I ran for this legislature 10 years ago, I was Director of Department of Youth Affairs, I resigned for six months. When you ran, Madam Speaker, you resigned from your position and you ran -- you're telling me 10 months. Well, you decided much earlier than I did that I was going to be a candidate for the legislature. And so you resigned for 10 months, and I resigned for six months. Some of us resigned, some of us did not. And I think the test case is Benigno Palomo. When he took it to court, and the court upheld that, given the current law, there -- those two categories of employees are those appointed by the governor, confirmed by the legislature, and special assistance of the governor can run for the public office without having to resign. In the case of the legislature, our standing rules prohibit employees from being a candidate so that our employees have had to resign in order to seek public office. And so I'm working with the legal counsel and in discussing, again, with the Civil Service Commission, the federal Hatch Act prevents any kind of federal employee from being a candidate for office. And so if we are really doing something that should mirror what they do on a federal level, I'm going to offer an amendment to reflect what's done with respect to the federal Hatch Act. And I understand that the legal counsel is working on that amendment right now.
Okay.
But for the purposes of moving forward this discussion, I'm amenable to having this discussion at the same time we're developing the amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Respejio, I'll go ahead and honor that request. We'll sit, and when your amendment is done, we'll go ahead and come back to you. Anybody else wanting to speak on the main motion? Senator Guthridge, you're recognized on the main motion.
Hi. I have a question.
Go ahead and state your question.
If you would. Senator Respejio's amendment, I'm wondering, does it cover nonpartisan positions? Because presently, we allow government employees who are not employees of the Department of Education to run for the school board. And there are other nonpartisan positions, like CCU.
Senator, I'm going to go ahead and do a point of information from Senator Respejio because that amendment is not out yet. So we couldn't entertain that in any kind of inquiry form unless we have it actually noted.
But I could yield the question and thank Senator Guthridge.
If you still choose to, Senator Respejio, you may.
For the question. Well, we didn't have to exempt it because the Hatch Act only covers political activity. And so in nonpartisan elections, the Hatch Act doesn't apply. So you can be a candidate for the Board of Education and talk to GovGuam employees and do everything that's required of a candidate for a nonpartisan position to be able to have those kinds of activities. Yeah, Attorney General's position, the public address position, the CCU. I mean, there's a distinction. And the only activity that's regulated is partisan activity.
Senator Respejio, I'll go ahead and yield to Senator Frank Blas on his point of information.
Thank you. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the good senator wanting to. But I think I'd like to participate in the discussion and I will wait the -- because it may answer some of the questions and some of the concerns that were brought in by the good senator from Engila.
Thank you. Thank you, my brother. I'll go ahead and entertain that. Senator, if we may? I'll go ahead and wait until the amendment comes out, and then we'll go ahead and entertain that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion on 419? If not at this time, I'm going to go ahead and take a legislative recess, and we'll come back shortly. Good afternoon. The legislature's back in session. Senator Respejio, do you have your...
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I don't have the amendment yet, but I want to ask that this body reconsider the decision of foregoing any discussion until the legal counsel has had time to prepare the amendment, and she's prepared to do that. But why I think it's important to generate some discussion is so we have an idea where the body intends to go with this issue that I'm bringing forward. And so there can be some understanding in what the pleasure of the body is. And, you know, the legal counsel provided civil case number CV 102-94. And remember, the plaintiffs in the case of Arthur Tovéz, Bonito, Jay Perez, Edward Estacchio, Joaquin Guerrero, and Francisco Esen Camacho versus Henry Torres and the Guam Election Commission. This was a Supreme Court -- a Superior Court decision that is actually relevant to our discussion. And in the Supreme -- in the Superior Court decision, it actually reaffirms that the legislature does not have the authority to enact additional qualifications to memberships under 48 USC Section 1423F. This is, as we know, to be the Organic Act. It says, "The key question then becomes whether the Guam Legislature has the conferred authority to enact additional qualifications to membership under this U.S. Code, or whether such an attempt is inconsistent with that particular provision." And it says, "It is a generally accepted principle on this point that where a constitution establishes specific eligibility requirements for a particular office, these constitutional criteria are deemed exclusive, and is not within the power of the legislature to change or add to them." As the plaintiffs have demonstrated, there's abundant case law to support that position. And so in reading this Superior Court order, it appears that we probably don't have the authority to prohibit classified employees from being a candidate for elected office. But this order does provide a remedy to say that the legislature does have an alternative to reach its goal by declaring the official's position vacant upon being certified as a candidate. So in the case that I'm presenting, we can either say that the -- we can't -- we cannot provide additional qualifications to the offices that are covered under the Organic Act, but we can say that the official's position is vacant upon being certified as a candidate for that office. So we can, on one hand, control the eligibility requirements for public office, but we can have the authority to, on the employment side. So it becomes a case of whether we want to do this for all or do this for none. And that's why I was hoping that we generate some discussion out in the public where we're very transparent and we can decide if, in wanting to overhaul the federal Hatch Act, the mini Hatch Act, to reflect what is done at a federal level, if that's where we want to go.
Based on that, I'm going to go ahead and ask Vice Speaker to proceed with his point of inquiry. He's raised his hand, and you raised your hand, right? We're still on the bill, so in order for me to address you, I would have to...
Madam Speaker, just a point of information. I do understand the issue that's been raised in the Tovéz case because it was used in my shelving, a bill that I introduced. Remember, I introduced a bill early in the session where I was going to require that all of us running for public office had to get a tax clearance to prove that we had paid our taxes and had nothing outstanding. And this case was used as the argument that this legislature had no authority to add any additional qualifications to running for office. The proposal, the remedy that's being -- that's suggested in the Tovéz decision is to be taken in a completely different section in the election statute, not in the Hatch Act. And any amendment at this point would be nongermain to this discussion.
Anyone else?
In response to, if senators just, if senators just pay attention, they, they would understand what we're discussing.
Senator Respecho, go ahead and, and share your thoughts.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I understand the Vice Speaker saying that any amendments will not be done to this section, but another section, and he believes this discussion is non-Germain. But on page four, line 13, it prohibits a classified employee from being a candidate for public office. And so, so if, if we're going to leave this as such, then what I'm suggesting is that we amend this language so that we conform to the remedy provided in the Superior Court order to say that this position is, is no longer vacant, or if, or to do the, just the opposite. But, but we cannot, we cannot prevent the classified employees from being a candidate because we're, we're providing additional requirements to run for elected office without, without reflecting the court's remedy in this area. Yeah. Yeah, so, but based on the, the back and forth discussions, I'm, I'm prepared to concede that, that we're not ready to address whether or not appointed officials and employees of the governor's office should be eligible to run for public office. I, I also don't, Madam Speaker, want to be accused of electioneering while we run an election season and right or wrong, for better or for worse, I, I would see that something like this should be done in an off-election year. I, I don't also want to provide this administration with an opportunity to veto this bill and the work that the Vice Speaker has done to overhaul the, the Mini Hatch Act so that it's updated. This thing hasn't been updated for at least 30 years or so. And so, but I, I do want us to focus our, our attention on page four, line 13, to decide whether or not prohibiting an employee from being a candidate conforms to this Superior Court order.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. I'm going to ask for legislative recess so that I can consult with legal counsel on how to proceed moving forward on this. We're in recess. Legislature is back in session. Senator Respecho, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, I want to thank every single member of this legislature that's present this afternoon because the issues that I just raised created a lot of discussion and excitement as to what we need to do in the next phase of wanting to reform the Mini Hatch Act to, to mirror the federal Hatch Act. And so, so in light of that, I think these discussions need to be more thoroughly vetted. And I'm fully prepared, if, if the interest is still there, to address it as a standalone issue. But, but having said that, I offered no amendments, just some discussion. I appreciate the feedback because I have a very good idea now of what the consensus of this body is. And so, we always do things by majority consensus and I'm, I'm fully prepared to yield to that. So I, I have no further input regarding this bill, only to say that I rise in full support and I commend the sponsors.
Thank you very much, Senator Respecho. So on the motion, Senator Guthertz? The main motion. The bill itself, yes, that has been amended. Oh, okay. Thank you very much, Senator Guthertz. Is there anybody else and who would like to speak? Senator Yamashita, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to stand in full support of Bill Number 419-31. Madam Speaker, at the public hearing, as I sat there and listened to the presentation and the testimony, I, I really thought this, this was really great. I thought this was really good because this really is a measure that will, that will help our employees become even more involved in a very critical process. In a process that helps determine who our leadership is, in a process that determines how that leadership is being defined. And so, as we, as the author of the measure struck out some of the prohibited, prohibited activities, I thought that was good. And I actually think that more of the prohibited activities should be struck out. But I do realize, after speaking with civil service and with speaking with the Vice Speaker and others, I do realize that you need to take sometimes slow, measured steps. And I do realize that our community has gotten to a point where there is seemingly hesitation in fully trusting employees to do what is right. And so, this for me is a really good compromise in now allowing our employees to take an active part in our organized political process. And it's interesting to me that somehow along the way, the political process has been, has become tainted in that anybody who wants to step up to the leadership plate somehow becomes known to be someone who is doing something wrong, is questioned, there's always another agenda. And I just, while maybe that has happened, more often than not, I don't see that happening. And more often than not, whether it's in our own body or across the executive branch or the judicial branch, through our mayors, when leadership says they want to help, that's what they want to do. And so, for me, the, to allow our government of Guam employees to be engaged and to be involved and to help, I think is a really good thing. Madam Speaker, on the agenda still remains a bill that does talk about fairness and integrity for our employees. And I really think, in a, in a different sense, this does strengthen that whole item of saying that employees are due the opportunity to be engaged, to be involved, and to be respected. And so, I think it's been very intriguing conversation. And at another point, I would like to see more of the prohibited activities be struck out so that as we, as we learn from our classified employees, they are the ones who really have a full understanding of what kind of policies, what kind of programs and practices need to be put into place so that the quality of life can be heightened for all of our people. And with that, Madam Speaker, I appreciate this being on the agenda and I fully support 419-31. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator. On the motion, there being none, Mr. Vice Speaker, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank my colleagues for this very enlightening discussion. I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate the support for this legislation to, to engage and allow our employees to participate in a very important democratic process. So I hope for their support when we get to the voting pile and I thank them again, all my colleagues, for their, their comments. And I want to again thank Civil Service Commission for all the hours and hours that they spent with my staff and I in trying to make sure that this bill addresses the needs of our merit employees. Thank you. And I move the bill to the voting pile.
On the motion, send for 19 to the voting pile without any objections, so ordered. Bill Number 420-31, Senator Plaza, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to substit-, to accept, substitute Bill 420. And if I can just explain why I'm substituting.
Wait, one second, so...
I pass out the substitute bill.
Okay, but what was originally then, on the agenda is the original bill?
The original 420.
So the motion then will be to place or to, or to accept rather, I'm sorry, the substitute?
To accept a substitute bill 420, to sub-, as a substitute for the original 420.
Okay, so that would be the, the first motion then is to accept it, so?
Yes, to accept it.
Okay, so on the motion without any objections, so ordered. Then now you want to place and...
I move that substitute bill 420 to be placed on the third reading file for purpose of discussion.
You may proceed, Senator.
Madam Speaker, my motion to place this substitute bill is because we actually cited the wrong subsection. Madam Speaker, my motion to place this substitute bill is because we actually cited the wrong subsection. And the subsection that in the original bill, subsection J, actually provides only for the licensing requirement such as filling out the forms properly, be of legal age, and so forth. And then, we found out that subsection M actually deals with the renewal. For example, subsection M provides, for example, for a three-year life of the license. And it provides for a ninety-day, or rather, it provides for a renewal at the end of the three-year. And it provides for a ninety-day grace period. So, subsection M is actually the proper section, and that's why the substitution. And also, the word renewal on the title itself is also a new feature, a new item in the substituted bill. Because really, Bill 420 is just about a renewal of a license and not qualifying for a license. And so, that actually put it in the proper, I guess, proper section. Now, so that is the appropriate section. And, Madam Speaker, I put the entire M, subsection M, to enable one, of course, to make sense of the proposed amendment. For example, that this is just a requirement for traffic record check. Remember that the proposal to have the traffic record check is only on renewing the driver's license and not on the initial application. There are some requirements for the initial application. That's already in law, and that law is not going to be disturbed by the proposed amendment. Madam Speaker, Bill 420 proposes to require the Department of Revenue and Taxation, which is the issuing authority for driver's license, prior to renewing any driver's license of any class, chauffeur, operator, taxi, that they check the traffic violation record of the applicant with the judiciary of Guam. And the bill further proposes that if the judiciary record shows three separate convictions in any twelve-month block, the revenue taxation not renew the license unless the applicant submit a certificate of completion of a traffic safety course as approved by DRT. And if one asks what is the nature, what is the content of the traffic safety course, Madam Speaker, that would be at the discretion of the issuing authority. And I understand that right now, there are providers of driver's education. I am sure that they already have the infrastructure, and all they need to do is just update or design a different curriculum to specially address, I guess, problem drivers, if you want to call it that way. Madam Speaker, this proposal is different from what we recently passed that deals strictly with reckless driving, in which revenue taxation can actually require a so-called defensive driving course. But that would be to a particular issue, and that's reckless driving. Now, this one takes into consideration any moving violation, which will not be recorded a revenue taxation, only at the court. Right now, currently, there is no policy in place that requires for a record check when one comes for renewal. Licenses, for example, Madam Speaker, that issued, say, thirty years ago, that had not lapsed, then we can assume that that's renewed ten times, assuming that that's renewed every three years. Licenses obtained thirty years ago were obtained under a different statute, probably under different regulations. And so, this is not to say that they're not qualified, but perhaps there are a few that probably need some kind of refresh your course. And eventually, to say that some of these violations maybe are not necessarily deliberate, but maybe because ignorance of some of these laws that actually have evolved through the years, twenty, thirty-year period. And so, any moving violation in any twelve-month period, Madam Speaker, would only require just a fresher course, probably, maybe an eight-hour orientation of something that is acceptable, because right now, there's none. And it's not enough anymore, Madam Speaker, that the police department goes out and enforce this motor vehicle code, issue a citation, and then collect the fines, and do it over and over and over again. I think Bill 420, Madam Speaker, proposes to add a positive feature in the enforcement of our vehicle code by requiring for a traffic violations record check to determine if the applicant via his record is deemed an unsafe driver. Unsafe to himself, maybe unsafe to the other motorists that are out there. And so, the three moving violations in any twelve-month period, Madam Speaker, I would, based on our own experience, would consider the applicant an unsafe driver. Hence, a refresher training course probably would be deemed appropriate prior to renewing that driver's license. With the hundred-and-eighty-day effective date, and that's in the substitute bill, the judiciary of Guam will be able to completely put in place a systems that will store up-to-date record of traffic violation convictions accessible to Department of Revenue and Taxation, to GPD, to probation officers, parole officers, and of course, the judiciary itself. I just spoke this morning with, I guess, the executive, the director of policy there, and even Perry Titanu yesterday. They are, as we speak, already implementing a system that will be able to provide this capability. So, a six-month implementation period is more than sufficient to set it in motion. The Department of Revenue and Taxation support this. I spoke this morning, I mean, just this afternoon, with the deputy director, and clarified with her that this has nothing to do with what they're doing now in designing a safety driving course to address the newly established policy, which Senator Rodriguez altered, which we just passed, that actually require a training for a conviction of reckless driving. So, I tell him, I inform, explain to her the difference between that new law and this one. This one is just purely a check on what you have on record of the different moving violations. Speeding, fail to you right away, fail to stop, fail to stop on a red light, minor, but moving. That in the end, if it's habitual, then you become an unsafe driver out there. So, with that, again, a thirty-day implementation period, Madam Speaker, I think it is... This can only enhance the safety out there of all motorists, including the problem driver himself. And I ask my colleagues to consider this and maybe support this one more, I guess, policy that again would improve our highway safety. And by the way, the Public Works, I received administration supported this. And again, it enhances our image in the eyes of the federal government that we are concerned about highway safety, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to be able to stand in support of this bill. There's just a couple of questions that I have, and the author can yield to the question. Well, first question that I have is, it's actually found on page three, line thirteen. Attendance in a program in driver's safety. And I just, you know, heard the presentation by the author. With regards to the difference, my concern, though, is there a program on driver's safety or that exists? Or is, do we, in other words, do we use that, do we use, you know, that definition, or do we say program in traffic, you know, basic driving school or defensive driving? I know that we recently passed at least two pieces of legislation that basically spell out with regards to driver education and defensive driving and whatnot. Is this, are we establishing a new program here, or is there an existing program, or should we use the language already accepted or already in law?
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Yes, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is not particularly a definite, specific program, but a general description, actually, that's actually the intent here. It's just like when you say a driver. A driver could be a chauffeur, could be a taxi driver. But it won't hurt to, and the reason why this is a chosen, I think, word here is that if you follow after the comment, it's approved by the Department of Revenue and Taxation. And actually, Madam Speaker, the Department of Revenue and Taxation is the issuing authority. Whatever that satisfies them, that's what it is. Now, I spoke with Marie, the deputy director, this afternoon, and indicated that if even the driver's education school now, they can be referred there and be certified. They can actually be required to take a refresher course if that would satisfy the Department of Revenue and Taxation to renew that driver's license. So, really, if we were to indicate any specific program, then it would diminish the discretion of revenue taxation to check other kind of program. Whatever program fits to address the issue. But again, if, you know, I had spoken with a colleague earlier this afternoon to change the driver into traffic safety. It could be a traffic safety. The bottom line is that we need some kind of training for drivers that appear to have developed a bad habit or a poor habit of driving, Madam Speaker. So, I accept whatever, I guess, substitute, you know.
With that, Madam Speaker, I think that there is language that is available, current statute that would actually fit in the intent of this thing. And I'd like to be able to proffer an amendment. Instead of saying in line thirteen, "driver's safety," change it to "driver improvement."
Driver improvement?
Yes. Program in driver improvement. There is, it's already law.
Okay.
We have statute, driver improvement or defensive driving.
Please, Senator, state your point of information.
See, just Madam Speaker, just based on the conversation, my concern is, I think the intent of the author was to make sure that if there was an attempt, I mean, if there was three convictions of a moving violation, then that person would have to go back to the driving course.
No, that's not what it is.
Are you saying that they want to do the, an improvement driving course? Because for me, I would want them to go back to the basics. So, my question is, or my point of information is, the curriculum that exists today, based on the companies or the vendors that are already out there, already have a basic driving course for drivers to get on the road. Because we have a law that exists today that makes drivers go through the graduated licensing portion, there is already that, there's already a portion that exists in law for those who already have licenses elsewhere to come here and drive on our roads. There is a formula, if I'm not mistaken, that's already utilized. So, I'm just bringing that as a point of information because I think there's something similar in law that already exists.
And that's why I bring up, Madam Speaker, in law, we have right now, recognize it's either defensive driving or driver improvement. Well, see, if it's defensive driving, as, you know, there may be some of the violations that aren't necessarily would fit in the, under the category of defensive driving as opposed to driver improvement. Sure. Any three, but driver improvement, like the good author states, he doesn't want to, you know, you don't want to contain them. So, the utilization of what is recognized in statute, driver improvement. My concern is, when we say drivering safety, are we starting up a whole new program? Existing already is driver improvement or defensive driving.
On the amendment. Does anyone like to speak? Senator Guthertz?
For all intents and purposes, good drivers, but may have made an error one time, or parked too close to fire hydrant one time. You know, we, I understand, but we're almost over-regulating now people's lives. They can't even go to work. Be very careful what we're covering here, that we do not put down rules and regulations or laws that are really going to prohibit people from being able to make a living because of very minor infractions. Now, I can understand dangerous drivers, those that have caused harm to others or injuries to others or injuries to others' property in the course of driving. That's fine. But minor encounters, minor issues, we need to be very, very careful because we are playing with the lives and the ability of people to go to work and to make a living by over-regulating. Thank you.
On the amendment, Senator Mabini, you're recognized.
Thank you. Point of information. You know, I agree with all the previous speakers. And the concern, the bottom line is that we're all concerned about making sure we save lives. You know, it's so distressing for me every week, almost every day, opening up the newspaper and seeing accidents. Some of them minor, resulting in deaths, some of them major, resulting in deaths. But as far as the point of information, currently, you know, and I just found this out because of the first version of the bill, you know, I didn't even realize that even in our existing GCA, they call a negligent operator of a motor vehicle, if someone has four or more occasions, excuse me, four convictions within a twelve-month period, or six or more occasions within a consecutive twenty-four periods, months, or eight or more occasions of convictions within thirty-six. So, we already have it in our GCA as far as the kind of people that we consider or Department Revenue and Taxation would call a negligent operator of motor vehicle. And so, you know, let me go back to, you know, regarding the amendment. I commend the author, and I also commend the author of the proposed amendment because, in essence, what we're doing is following the intent of the author, but also aligning this bill with existing GCA, which exists right there. And I did speak with also the director, the acting director and the director over at the, at Revenue and Taxation, that all is asked is that we maintain consistency in the books, in the current GCA, which they're trying, working right now to promote, help me, promulgate the rules and regulations for what they call, make sure I got the right language, driver improvement, traffic school or defensive driving. Those are the three words that they're working with right now. So, all they're asking is just keep it consistent. And so, they said, as they see it, driver improvement, as the fine speaker from Baragada had mentioned, is what they would be asking for. And I commend the author again because he's, we're not doing anything more, any different than what many other states are doing to try to keep our roads safer. We already have, again, 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 I'm going to point out that even within our GCA, as it had surprised me, that we already have in there strict definitions of what a negligent operator means, is. And there are punishments that are, that, you know, that they will be, you know, that they will be guilty of or they would have to abide to if they meet these criteria. So, this is nothing new. I'll contribute to the pot. So, I'm in full support of the amendment and of the bill, provided that this amendment, driver improvement, is put in place, just so that we're all consistent. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Blas, you want to close on your amendment? So, any objections to the amendment? Hearing none, other than a caution, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my next concern is with regards to, it's the next line down. Actually, see, within the same area, it actually, on line eleven, it says, I'll just read it, it says, if his or her driving record reveals that he or she has been convicted of... that he or she has been convicted of three separate instances involving moving violations in any 12-month period." My concern is, "in any 12-month period" can mean, any 12-month, it could literally mean 12-month period 20 years ago. And so, I recognize what the concern is. And maybe what we wanted to do is, within the last licensing period, if this, within any 12-month period, within that last period, there was this, three violations. Right. Well, I think that in the interest of recognizing, okay, so this individual had a, now they, now you're allowed to get five-year driver's licenses. Three, you know, you have an option of either three or five years. So to keep within the consistency and recognizing what the author wanted to do here, within a 12-month period, I think that then we should just keep it within the last licensing period. Well...
Senator, proceed with your amendment. And if anyone has anything to contribute, then they...
Yes, thank you.
So your amendment again, one more time, please.
Says, "In any 12-month period within the last licensing period."
In any 12-month period within?
Within the last licensing period.
The last licensing period.
Yeah, within the, I'm sorry. Within the current licensing period. No, but I'm saying...
Okay, so on the amendment, the Blasch amendment, Senator Guthers, you're recognized. Wait, one, yes, please.
Speaker, I'm listening to the amendment. If you have a five-year license, and you're going to renew it, right? The amendment would say, I guess would mean that if you had three violations within the five years... But what 12-month period? The last 12 months? The first 12 months? The middle of the 12 months?
The way the legislation is written now, it could be the last 12-month period 20 years ago.
Okay. But what I, this is the point I'm trying to make, Madam Speaker, is I think, for this to work, let's say you have a five-year license. And in the first year of your five-year license, you know, you got three moving violations. But then you became very attentive, and you improved your driving, and became better at it, and more of an expert. So when you're up for getting a new license, you're going to penalize the person for the first year of that five-year license because they got their three violations during the first year. My suggestion would be that it covers the 12 months prior to the renewal. If it's a one-year license you're going to get, or a three-year or a five-year license. Only the 12 months prior to the renewal. Because I think it would be unfair to penalize somebody for getting three moving violations five years ago. That would be my recommendation. So I, that's the body, please think about that. And let's talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Munia Barnes, you wanted to...
My question, Madam Speaker, was, I guess, falls on the same line with the previous speaker.
I'm sorry, can you please address the chair?
That falls in line with the previous speaker. And my question, my point of inquiry was just to say, is that for, if a driver's license was for a period of four or five years, then based on the amendment, every time there is a renewed license, then the moving violations start all over again on the citations? Am I, is that a correct statement? Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Do you want to have that in, Senator Blasch?
Yeah, if, yeah, he can answer that question.
Yes, and we'll have it on record.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Senator Palacios, then, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Blasch amendment actually not clarify that, that indeed it would have to be during the period for which that license is being renewed, and not before that. Now, a comment made by our colleague about the committing the three violations in the first year, and then for the remaining four years, there's no violation. Well, then, it actually would not adequately fulfill the purpose of this proposal because if we're going to check only the last 12 months preceding the renewal, then a person can commit a violation every week and during the first and second year. Because you're not going to check that, you're going to check only the last 12 months. You're going to miss that. And so I think that if any 12-month block during this three-year or five-year life of the driver's license, that's actually indicate the frequency during that period. To me, that's an indication of some problem, in my opinion. And that's why I think that the 12-month block in a three-year or a five-year licensing period, I think would be adequate enough to monitor and, I guess, alert the licensing authority, you know, for some kind of refresher course. And that's my comment, Madam Speaker. And if I, yeah, go ahead, yeah. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay, on the amendment, Senator Guthers, you already spoke on the amendment. Are you...
A point regarding the amendment. Hey, guys. Miss Speaker, what I think is happening here is we're not recognizing any goodness in people. We're saying to them, especially we have this option for a five-year license, right? If you get three violations in the five years, then you have to go through this driver's class. Over five years, okay? I think it's too severe to penalize people unless they are actually dangerous on the roads. There's all types of non-moving violations, or moving violations. There are also implications of this on insurance rates. Now we're opening up a new kind of approach to insurance of vehicles on Guam, where insurance companies can use three violations over five years as a basis to increase insurance rates for our people. I think there has to be a distinction between dangerous drivers, obnoxious drivers, drivers that intentionally violate the speed limits and the laws, and individuals that make infractions that are not harmful, that are minor, but might be a moving violation. I don't think it's fair to throw everybody in the same category and say, "If you have three moving violations over five years, then you're going to have to take a class." We're making it harder and harder and harder for people to make a living on our island. Now, I support Senator Palacios's bill, but not with all this other stuff here. The way to do this, and I think the fairest way to do this, is really the 12 months previous to renewal. If you've had three moving violations, then you have to take the class. So I'd like to amend the amendment and make that a motion that anyone who receives three moving violations over the 12 months prior to renewal of their license shall be required to undergo this improved driving class.
Now, I'm sorry, I just took the chair, so I'm trying to figure out where we're at. Was the... In your amendment was...
Mr. Chair, I think you're going to have to dispose of my amendment before you can, before you can...
Because it's completely different.
It's completely different.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, I think, you know, the amendment that's being made, I think is very substantive. And I would like to see it in writing before we start making an amendment to the amendment. So I would ask to see the amendment that's been made in writing.
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess. Both proposing amendments were recessed.
Can somebody? We're back on the legislative speaking session. We were on Senator Frank Blas, but now I understand there's an amendment to the Blas amendment as opposed to a completely separate amendment. And I recognize Senator Ada.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The amendment I would like to make will actually just clarify when this 12-month period begins. When does the clock on the 12-month period start? There's been various ways. Somebody says the 12-month starts when the first citation is received. Others have suggested, well, let's make it coincide with... I'm suggesting that we'll make that clock, the start of that clock, coincide with the date when that license was first issued or renewed. So in my case, if my driver's license was initially renewed on May 21, 2012, then the clock starts on May 21 and continues until May 20, 2013. So within that 12-month period, I may have, if I was issued two citations, and then on May 22, I get issued another citation. In effect, if the clock started on the day that my license was renewed, then I technically only received two citations during that 12-month period. And then the third citation that I received actually started in the next 12 months. And as a result, then, I still will not be required to go to a remedial training class. So my amendment then will be that on line 11 on page three, it would read, involving moving violations in any 12-month period, comma, following issuance or renewal of a license, comma, within the current license period.
Can you repeat that again one more time? Following issuance or renewal?
Of a license.
Of a license.
Comma.
Comma.
Within the current license period.
Okay, so you're doing an amendment to the amendment?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
So, yes, so the words will be before Senator Blas's amendment. Okay, so... So on the Ada amendment, which is following issuance or renewal of a license, comma, and then you would continue on with the amendment that Senator Blas offered, within the current licensing period. So on the Ada amendment. No objections, so ordered. So on the Blas amendment. No objections, so ordered. Hey, please make sure that the clerk has the amendment. So it will actually read now for line 11, involving moving violations in any 12-month period following issuance or renewal of a license within the current licensing period. So on the main motion, I have Senator Mabini and then Senator Duñez. Oh, she canceled, okay. Senator Duñez.
Madam Speaker, I just wanted to rise in support of this measure. And as we had the discussion offline, working on some of the amendments, and I certainly can understand the concerns expressed by one of our colleagues as well here on the floor. But you know, in our discussions, a lot of us felt as though, really, we need to put some more teeth in our laws to basically show that when it comes to driving, truly, it is a privilege and not a right. And Madam Speaker, as we move forward and as the Director of Public Works and others consistently talk about our roadwork that's taking place and the number of cars that are on the road and the like, it's high time, Madam Speaker, that we have something like this in place that truly holds all of us accountable to our driving habits. And basically, in the corrective measures, says, look, you know, maybe there is something in your driver's training that you missed, that you need to, you know, brush up on, if you really cannot stay away from having three moving violations within a 12-month period. So I commend the author. I think it's very responsible legislation. It's very similar to, you know, the United States, all states really, and all jurisdictions whereby we have these complex highways that we have and the kind of speeds that we traverse along the road. So I want to commend the author and extend my full support for this measure 420-31. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the main motion, Blair Bingnan, Senator Palacios, would you like to close?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, again, I say that it's not enough that the police officers just enforce the law and issue citation, and this government collects the fine over and over and over again for repeated violations. I think, I believe that Bill 420 would add, like I said, a positive feature in the enforcement policy of this government with respect to the motor vehicle code. I thank my colleagues, of course, Madam Speaker, for their contribution toward improving Bill 420. The goal of Bill 420 is to identify problem drivers based on record of conviction with the courts and then require them to take a driver improvement program that is approved by the issuing authority, which is the revenue taxation, as a condition for renewal. I would think, Madam Speaker, that so-called problem drivers constitute only about maybe 5% of the entire driving population of this territory. So the income... There's no inconvenience imposed on this because the original bill that required the submission of court clearance is not the one that's on the floor. That is freaking out. Because I have received email this morning with this and that, and so I want to clarify that, that it is just the revenue taxation through accessing to the court system will make sure that they check. So the applicant, it's not inconvenient. Just go there, renew it, you get checked, okay, you're cleared. Most drivers, over 90%, I would think, Madam Speaker, would have no record in court. That would constitute the requirement for an improvement. And again, I thank my colleagues, and I move that this bill be placed on the third reading file, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
On the motion then to send Bill 420 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Rodriguez, you're recognized on bill number 421.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 421-31, the third reading file, and be allowed to discuss the bill.
You may proceed, Senator.
Thank you. Bill 421, Madam Speaker, is an act to authorize appropriation carryover provisions for the Guam Fire Department for the expenditure of expired enhanced 911 emergency reporting system funds for the specific purpose of conducting a 2012-2013 fire suppression and emergency medical services recruitment cycle, along with any other use prescribed in public law 25-55. Madam Speaker, the Guam Fire Department has not had a recruitment cycle since 2005, or the latter part of 2004, and a previous attempt to begin a cycle in fiscal year 2011 was halted due to the government's financial condition. Without any recruitment, staff to equipment levels have severely declined due to the arrival of additional vehicles and declining personnel levels resulting from military deployments and attrition. The department is presently experiencing an extreme shortage of manpower required to efficiently and safely provide its mandated services. The manpower shortage is primarily attributed to the following: the long-term deployment of firefighters who are members of a military guard and reserve component; personnel on sick leave status; personnel on emergency personal leave; retirements or resignations; and the activation of additional ambulances. There are approximately 80 fire personnel who are members of either a military guard or reserve. There are eight fire personnel currently deployed on active duty for eight to 12 months. And just recently, it was announced there would be an additional personnel called up to go on a long-term deployment. The shortage problem is further compounded in that GFD averages approximately five to six personnel who are either on sick leave status or emergency personal leave on a daily basis. The last time GFD was authorized to hire fire recruits was during the latter part of 2004. At that time, with the hiring of 27 fire recruits, the total number of firefighters was 303. Since then, a total of 44 personnel have retired, resigned, or passed away, leaving the positions vacant. To ensure the adequate services could be provided at the least cost possible, GFD had to resort to manning the fire trucks below the minimum manning standard set by the National Fire Protection Association. This has led firefighters to performing additional tasks which would otherwise have been shared and performed by additional personnel. With the arrival of additional ambulances, GFD had no recourse other than to recall fire personnel from their days off so as to ensure that these ambulances are adequately manned. This has resulted in the increase of 14% or $13,000 per pay period in GFD's overtime expenditures. This figure will dramatically increase with the scheduled deployment of guard and reserve personnel. Additionally, with the scheduled arrival of three new ambulances, additional personnel will again be required. Without additional personnel, Madam Speaker, to address the current shortfall, the department will continue to incur an annual overtime expenditure of approximately $3.5 million. GFD urgently needs to hire the fire recruits that were previously authorized but not funded in the fiscal year 2012. This act would fund the 2012-2013 fire recruit cycle by providing for the carryover expired enhanced 911 emergency reporting system enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System funds for the express purpose of conducting a recruitment cycle along with any other use prescribed in public law 25-55, by way of continuing authorization for the department to expand the funds required from the prior appropriation as amended. Madam Speaker, I also would like to, at this time, proffer an amendment. I believe it was distributed to our colleagues. During the public hearing on this bill, Madam Speaker, we had two conflicting reports, one from BBMR and one from DOA, that from BBMR was showing a negative balance in the account to be able to support this, to support this bill. And we also received a testimony that time as well from DOA, expressing their support in ensuring that funds, as identified in the bill, were available. And so, since then, we've had, we've asked them for a updated financial statement, that's been attached as well to this, to this floor amendment. One other development, Madam Speaker, that happened is that because there was no funding identified, the absence of this bill, the fire department had to terminate, or had to, yes, had to terminate, the 30 fire recruits that were previously selected and were set to be picked up. This was in late last year, when the fire department wrote to about 30 recruits, 30 selectees, and said that they were to start, they have been selected, and they were to start, but only to find out, a week later, they received another letter saying that because of the funding shortfall, that they won't be implementing this fire recruitment cycle. And unfortunately, Madam Speaker, for some of them, they had already resigned from their previous place of employment, and so they were put in a very, you know, very, very bad situation. And so, what we'd like to do, Madam Speaker, is with this floor amendment, is ensure that the top 30 firefighter recruit selectees still be honored, once this bill, and hopefully, if I get the support of my colleagues, is passed. We know now, Madam Speaker, that based on the updated financials that have been provided to us, that the funding source that we've identified is intact, there's money to support this fire recruitment cycle. And so, I'd like to ask my colleague's support in moving forward with this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So, the amendment that you're providing is for Section 3.
That's correct.
Okay, so, on the amendment. Senator Palacios, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment. It's clear, I think it addressed the issue raised by the administration and the concerns of fire department with respect to no funding. It is still a debatable issue, because I understand that according to DOA, there is funding in the 911, as originally planned. However, based on the information from BBMR, there's no funding, so that's very debatable, and I like to believe that there is funding. Now, Madam Speaker, I don't remember in the history of this government that an agency sent out a notice of hiring, and eight to 10 months later canceled that hiring. It never happened, especially in this kind of so-called multiple hiring of 30 recruits. Now, these 30 recruits, Madam Speaker, keep calling, of course, our office, particularly mine, because of my oversight of the fire department, trying to find out the status of this. The 30 recruits to be, and I would say that, have invested some of their limited funds, Madam Speaker, to get uniform, maybe accessories, to be ready, they were excited, they were proud to be employed, at least to have resigned from a job, a paying job. Now, I would say, Madam Speaker, that the cancellation of the hiring of the 30 recruits is unfair. And this government, Madam Speaker, through my observation, had not done enough to at least try and place these people. If this government cannot hire these people now, at least intercede in their behalf, ask a private employment, a private agency, the Department of Labor, to try and place them somewhere temporarily, as a minimal help from this government to mitigate the burden and the problem that these 30 officers, these 30 individuals are now experiencing. Now, this bill, Madam Speaker, at least this government, the least this government can do is to mitigate this problem by extending the eligibility list. I know that the eligibility list expires after 12 months. I asked one of the recruits that why is this eligibility list not extended? Madam Speaker, DOA can extend the eligibility list for another 12 months, provided, of course, that the agency director requests for this. They want to extend it or not, I mean, what really is the, you know, the lack of, the failure to do other things that could have been done, like ask for an extension of the list, or try and place this individual? Now, causes me to think that they are not sincere in helping these 30 recruits. And so, I wonder what really is the motivation? And so, this amendment says that we're going to extend that, that eligibility list is going to extend for another 12 months, and first priority for hiring as a fire recruit shall be these 30. And it's only fair, and at least this legislature, in behalf of this government, is doing the least thing that should be done for these individuals. And I rise in support of this amendment, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this is not saying to hire them, this is essentially saying they are still available for hiring, and they should get priority choice in the next hiring. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Palacios. Next to speak on the, Rodriguez, Vice Speaker, did you want to speak? Vice Speaker, did you wish to speak on the bill, on the main motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Mine really is a point of inquiry, if either of the sponsors would yield.
Go ahead and state your question, please.
Madam Speaker, I support the intent of hiring additional firemen. I have no problem with that. My concern is, is that under this one, we're using E911 carryover funds. My point of inquiry to the two sponsors is, how much is a full 12-month budget for the 30? And has that been included in the FY13, FY budget? Because I would hate to put them on, and then the governor's going to lay them off because there is no money. I'm wondering whether we're compounding it, but I just need to ask that question. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Rodriguez or Senator Palacios, would you like to answer that? Senator Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the amount that is identified here, it's on page two, is to get this recruitment cycle started. And the Vice Speaker is correct, it's not to sustain them moving forward. However, it's going to be imperative for the fire department to now, once this recruitment cycle starts, imperative for them to include this in their budget. I mean, we're paying over $3 million in overtime. I think it's time that, you know, we look at bringing in new people and shifting that the funding that's been used in overtime into these new personnel. And so, I don't know if it was already included in the fire department's budget, and maybe I'll yield to the oversight chair on that.
Senator Palacios, would you like to add on to the inquiry?
I have no knowledge of that. In fact, I have not received the budget packet, probably can inquire from the community taxation, or directly with the, but I can find that out by tomorrow, if they include it in the 2013 budget.
Thank you, Senator Palacios. Vice Speaker Cruz, there was additional information provided to, the answer was to go ahead and seek from the budget, upcoming 2013 budget, from the agency to come back to them and give them that information. Would that suffice for you, for now? I'm going to go ahead and entertain, thank you, Vice Speaker. I will go ahead and entertain then, after Vice Speaker's, Speaker Wampat, Chris Duñez, and Eileen Yamashita, all on the amendment. Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, you know, of course, I support the intent of what it is that this bill is trying to do. The question, of course, I have is the use of the funding source, the E911, and right now, as it stands, that particular program is not even in full implementation, there's still some problems with it, and to get, to take the money, of course, in which it was not designed, of course, for personnel, but rather for the E91 dispatch center, which would actually, to ensure continuity and improvement of the emergency medical services, and also for the ambulatory services by the department. And, of course, now, you know, the funding will be used for something that's not in the original intent of the law. Now, of course, I know the legislature, you know, can write and repeal and amend, of course, all that can be provided for, but the concern I have as well is that we may be taking care and addressing the issue right now, the much-needed support. My real concern is, in a couple of months, you know, that how are we going to be able to sustain this? And this, of course, reminds me of when the governor was asking, and actually asking all of the head of each department and agency to determine how then savings can be realized, and it's not savings to be realized, to be able to turn around and then give it to another department or an agency. It would be savings, of course, or cutting back, because, so that we will be able to live, you know, within what it is that the government is able to bring in. We don't have the details, my understanding of the budget that has been submitted, the governor has submitted to the legislature, I know it's still unclear, it's more like lump sums rather than, you know, detailed authorization or appropriations. And I'm just thinking that, are we then going to be able to hurt again? And this is the worst part, is if you hire somebody, 30 individuals, and only to find out then that we are unable to sustain this, or appropriate the monies for the new fiscal year, then what have we done? The other is, is that maybe, let's say that since we are using the E911 monies, are we going to turn around then and say, because, you know, we never know how much of those are going to be completed, it varies at times, so then, do we want to say then that potentially there could be, again, a balance in that account, and then use that for these new employees? There's another scenario that we could easily, I guess, or the governor could consider, is that when these individuals come on board, they're normally anyway, at least for six months, on probation, so then after that, do we release them? I'm just thinking that the damages are far greater than what it is that ultimately is what we would really want to do. I would like, and I know in my conversation that I had with the fire chief, when he was coming up for confirmation, and I had asked the question, basically, in terms of statements that he's made, initiatives that he wanted to push forward, and where is he going to look at savings, so that he'll be able to start addressing that $3 million of, you know, monies that are spent just on overtime? And we all know that it's definitely a lot more cost-effective for the government to be able to hire the individuals, the individuals needed, the 30 individuals, versus having to pay for overtime for the existing number of personnel because of the shortfall. We all know that. But the question is now, is how then will, and where will the department be able then to identify savings? And the identification of savings, yes, I realize that in a conversation that we had earlier with the chairman, is that we hire all of these individuals, okay, and they go in, so maybe then now, for the next fiscal year, we can reduce a certain dollar amount for these additional 30 individuals that is going to be brought on, on board. But the other question, of course, that we've not even calculated in this case, is that granted, there is this amount of money that's available between now and the end of this fiscal year, but we've not factored in the actual cost per person with benefits and medical, you know, insurance and retirement and all that to factor in, and the taxes, of course, that would have to be factored in. And we know is that for almost the average, I mean, gosh, I wouldn't, I don't even want to venture into that, because my understanding is that the average for, of a firefighter is definitely very different from any member of the community. The other, again, concern that I have is that although, yes, all of these individuals have gone through the training and the selection, and in good faith, of course, these individuals, you know, were ready to be hired, and I can understand that now, but my question here is that since that time, that these recruits then have been informed that, you know, had the monies been available, of course, they would have hired them, is that from that time to today, you know, things may have happened, and there's absolutely nothing here, no safety net, to make sure then that although, yes, we want to continue to maintain that same group of individuals, but there has to be a process to go back and find a re-screen again, not the whole process, but just to really make sure that there's been no change in terms of any, you know, violations maybe of laws, you know, or crimes committed, you know, against, of course, anyone in the government in that case. But there's nothing here that would at all allow for that to happen, it just says that, you know, you go back and you take all those 30 individuals without having to go back again to at least do a, you know, at least a, maybe a court, you know, background check, or court clearance check, or a police clearance check, something of that sort, and especially for a position that we consider very important in terms of public safety. And so, we just want to make sure that all those things are considered. I wish I had, you know, the budget, so that then we can actually, you know, discuss it, then we would know exactly where then, where we're going with this.
Did you wish to proffer an amendment, or do that in the form of an inquiry?
Point of information, please.
Oh, we have a point of information from Senator Rodriguez, please proceed.
Madam Speaker, thank you. Just to address the concerns that were just brought up about if there was some change in, I don't know, I think what was referenced, if someone's been arrested or something, if you look at the second page of the amendment, the last sentence there, I'm sorry, before the last sentence, it says that unless they choose not to participate and/or some extenuating circumstance or event would prohibit or negate their ability to participate. So, there's that safeguard in there that would, that would address the concerns that were just brought up, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker.
Senator Palacios, go ahead and state your point of information.
I just got word from my office through examination of the budget. Yes, the Guam Fire Department included 15 recruits for FY 2013. So that's half of the 30. It's in the budget, as we speak right now. So now we should be considering for the other 15.
Senator Palacios, just to clarify, you're saying based on the 30 that have already been accepted, for 2013, they're already out of the 30, they're going to pick up 15?
No, no, not pick up 15, not necessarily that. They requested to fund 15 positions. So I would think that maybe they would pick up the 15, 15 from the 30 to fill the 15. But that's why the Rodriguez amendment is relevant because according to DOA and the fire department, the eligibility list expires, which means they're going to have to requalify all over again. And I cannot understand why GFD did not request one extension, which is provided in law that they can request. At any rate, the, part of the amendment, of course, of Senator, of this bill is to extend that and to provide that there be first consideration for any new hiring from your own fourth. And so I'm sharing with my colleagues, the Guam Fire Department requested for the funding of 15 new positions for the 2013.
You're right.
How is it going to fill that? It's not necessarily any of the 30.
It's not the 30 plus the 15. It's just 15 new positions.
And it's not even 15 from the 30. It's, that's how it is, as it's written now. Thank you.
Senator Palacios, would, just for clarification sake, would that be coming from the governor's request or from the agency's request?
That's the budget they submitted.
The governor's office submitted on behalf of the agency?
You know, I'm not clear about that. I just look at the GFD budget, and I would think that that's the one that, that's the one they told me, that they requested. I don't know, I would think that it's approved for 15.
By the governor's office?
Yes.
Okay. Senator Malisi. Speaker Wampat, you still have the floor?
Okay, thank you very much, but then there's something that I need to bring up because I'm not, you're not going to get any arguments at all from, I think, anyone here when we're talking about these 30 recruits that have gone through the whole process, you know, and training and screening and all that, and testing, and are eligible and ready, of course, to be hired, that we want then to be able to provide for, through law, of course, an extension so then these individuals will still be given a first priority before they consider bringing anybody new again from the outside and having to start all over. That, you know, definitely, you know, at least for me, I can't speak for everyone, but that I can support. What now, of course, that I'm thinking of is that, you know, is that there is part two of this bill, and that's the appropriations. And I'd just like to say then, Madam Speaker, that since this is an appropriations, is only then according to our standing rules, is that we really should go into the committee of the whole, to be able then to bring in the governor's financial people, to be able to tell us then based on the budget, whether this dollar amount then could be a part of, let's say, the budget for the new fiscal year. Because if it is, then that shouldn't be a problem, then we shouldn't even be questioning that, but it would only address, because we really need to address what then the full dollar amount is. And I don't know whether, again, it's just something for discussion, is something that we, I discussed, several of us, you and I actually discussed with the chairman as well, is that, because we know that there is an exorbitant amount of money being spent on overtime, that this could address some of those issues, and that maybe then we need to possibly consider even some measures or initiatives to be taken to do just that so that we won't find ourselves then short of having the balance amount then to be able to bring these 30 individuals on board. Because if the budget is saying 15 is a request, it's not necessarily, of course, you know, guaranteed, because we're going to make that decision in August. We're going to make that decision, of course, or start formulating, you know, our thoughts and looking at the monies that are being generated, and what our debt services are, and what the balance would be now for us to start appropriating, and that should start taking place, you know, here in June and July. And definitely, we want to make sure that key departments and agencies in particular, public health, safety, and education are given that priority before we even consider, you know, of course, any other departments and agencies. So those are just thoughts, and I don't know whether this would be appropriate at this time, but it might be actually, because I know that we are close to the hour in which we would recess, that we really do then, and tomorrow, since we are going to go into the committee of the whole for Senator Guthrie's bill, that we also do the same thing for this bill as well.
Well, if you can put that in a motion form, we'll take it, knowing that we do have to break away for a recess, for a public hearing at 6:00 this evening. Speaker Wampat, I'm going to go ahead and entertain Senator Rodriguez on a point of full motion. If not, then I'm going to go ahead and...
I'd like to, but I don't, I'd like to talk to the chairman.
I'm going to go ahead and take a recess for a legislative recess. It's 10 minutes till 5:00. We'll go ahead and take a recess till tomorrow morning at 9:00.